I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we get into our agenda, there's a few administrative matters that I need to take care of. First and foremost, in the event of a fire, please note that the fire exit is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If so notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the exit. Do not use the elevators. Use either the north or the south stairs to leave the building. The minutes of the meeting are being recorded by our secretary, Michelle, for the purpose of a record, not a verbatim transcript, but she does try to keep them accurately for us. So when you come to the microphone at the podium, please identify yourself each time so that she can keep track of who is saying what. And please speak clearly into the microphone. We follow the items on the agenda in the order that they appear on the agenda. There are extra copies of the agenda on the table by the door. Once the case has been called, the applicant or their representative will come forward to the podium, state their name and address, pause a moment, raise their right hand to be sworn, and then present their case. During the presentation of the case, the members of the board can ask questions or engage in discussion with the applicant or their representative as we deem to be appropriate. Once that process is concluded and there's no more questions or discussion between the applicant and the board, we open the hearings up for public input. So far, we've identified three categories of public input. The first is those who wish to speak in favor of the application. The second is those who wish to speak in opposition to the application. And the third category is those who would like to speak about the application, but they're not for it or against it. They just want to talk to us about some part of the application. Once we've concluded all of that, if the applicant wishes to respond to anything that came up during the public input portion, they'll be given an opportunity to do that. During the public input portion, the comments all are addressed to the board, not to the applicant, and there should be no back and forth with the applicant. Once the applicant has had the opportunity to address the board again, if it's desired, then the hearing will be closed and we'll move on to the next case. After we've heard all the cases on the agenda, the board will then take a brief break, and after that, we will return and deliberate in the order that the cases appear on the agenda and for which the applicant and their representative are still present. So if the first applicant has left, and the second applicant is here, we would take the second application first and go down the agenda in the order that the applicants are still present, and then we would go back to the first case and do the applications for which the applicant is no longer present. You're not required to, during the deliberation portion, there is no public input and no discussion with the board unless the board specifically invites that. You don't have to stay for the deliberative portion. They've moved us into the 1300s on cable, so if you want to rush home and be warm on the couch, you can see the exciting conclusion to our meeting. Or you can catch it on a replay, or you can call the planning and zoning department tomorrow morning after 9:00 a.m., and they will be glad to tell you what our decision was on the cases that we had before us tonight. So we will now call our first case.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item on the agenda is case number ZB 1912-1, upon the matter of request by Dale and Kelly Conroe for area variances to maintain a recently reconstructed driveway exceeding maximum permitted driveway square footage and front yard and with less than required setback on premises 29 Orland Road in an R2 residential district.
Hello, my name is Kelly Conroe, 29 Orland Road.
I'm Dale Conroe, 29 Orland Road.
Raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you. So you want to keep your driveway the way it was widened to accommodate all of your vehicles?
Yes.
Then I read something in the application about an issue with the town. Has that been rectified?
Not that we're aware of. There's still some confusion on our part regarding whether this variance, if it was approved tonight, would include the entire driveway. We're a little confused how that all works.
The board can only grant variances for property that you own.
Okay.
And generally, the town right-of-way on a road extends beyond the edge of pavement for some distance. It varies. So we can't grant a variance for what's in the town's right-of-way for the road. But once you get to the edge of the right-of-way, then we're okay.
Right, okay.
Beyond that.
Yeah, so thus far, we have been told that we do have to narrow the driveway for that right-of-way.
All right.
Yeah, our understanding, the right-of-way is 14 feet from the road.
Could be.
Yep, that's what I've been told.
And this came about because you used a contractor who you believed had checked with the town and done everything, which is a common thing that we hear.
Yes.
A lot of times with fencing contractors, we hear that in particular.
It's been several years since we've done a project that required a permit, so we naively believed our contractor that he told both of us that he had gotten the permit. And, you know, he's been doing business in this town for many, many years, so we believed that he was leading us down the right path. And it wasn't until after the project was done that he gave us our permit, which in reality was just the application. And that's kind of where...
And it was dated the day of the job.
So that's kind of where we're at right now.
Probably a few minutes after the deposits slipped from the check, is my guess.
Yes, yes.
All right. Where are you? I'm confused as to where the town is asking you to take out 14 feet of the driveway.
Nope, they're asking us to take out a foot and a half, 14 feet up.
Yeah, in the...
The east or the west side?
The east.
East side.
Yep. So it'd be the side of the driveway that's bordering our property, our yard. It's not a lot of driveway.
No. No, but, I mean, I think it looks well done the way it is now.
We agree. We're very happy with the job.
Even the postman liked it.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, when I was out there looking at it, his driveway doesn't appear. I didn't take out a tape measure, measure it, but there are a number of driveways in his media area with seemingly the same width, eyeballing it. So I'm not sure... Or maybe can you explain that foot and a half...
So it's the, up to the Commissioner of Public Works is the one who reviews applications for work in the right-of-way or alterations to existing curb cuts. So that's the case that's here. And typically, it's not, those decisions are based on the width of the property. And that's my understanding is how the general policy and practice for the Commissioner of Public Works has been based on a percentage. And so in order to be consistent across the board, notwithstanding other driveways, those may have been done without the benefit of a permit and/or permission from the Department of Public Works. They might have been pre-existing non-conforming to the current standard. So this board can't make a decision regarding the right-of-way. Can only make a decision based on of the area that exceeds within the private property. And then it's up to the Commissioner of Public Works to work with the property owners as far as their right-of-way permit goes and what can and cannot be authorized through that process.
But it's not the width of the driveway so much as the width of the driveway in relation to the width of the lot, right?
So the, yeah, so for the Commissioner of Public Works and the decision on the distance or the length allowed for a curb cut, that's their, how they process those types of applications. For the front yard variance, it's the amount of pavement as a percentage of the total front yard still exceeds. So even with that reduction, they only have to reduce the width, the length in the, the width as far as it extends to the private property line. Once you're on the private property, they could, you know, fanned it out and keep that existing width on their private property. So the need for a front yard variance still exists, even with the reduction in the width of the road.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, maybe I'm channeling Mr. Thompson, but is there a practical reason that that reduction is needed? In other words, other than just...
It's the Commissioner of Public Works' decision. This board doesn't get to make a decision based on the right-of-way.
I would certainly hope so.
It's a, the percentage has been the standard so that the width is, there's some proportion to driveway widths. Otherwise, we might have folks who'd want to have a driveway apron the length of, the width of their front yard.
We've had some of those real close. All right. Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about driveways, right-of-ways, anything like that? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this case. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
And happy holidays.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda...
Is case number ZB 1912-2, upon the matter of request by Thomas and Virginia McTay for an area variances to maintain side yard fencing exceeding maximum permitted height and non-conforming fence type and maintain rear yard fencing with non-conforming fence type on premises 32 Lakely Road in an R1 residential district.
Thomas McTay, 32 Lakely Road.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. I have a question for you. Does this work in keeping the deer out of your yard?
Yes.
And that's because it goes up to, what, how many feet high is it?
Well, most of it is six feet. Up front, you know, on the side yard, it's five feet.
Is the, is the lathe just going to go all the way around? Was this just a sample I thought I read, something like that?
The cap?
Yeah, the cap.
I would like to do that because it helps to stabilize it. And I think it gives aesthetically a better trim fit. It wasn't always available. There's a picture in there showing that.
Yeah. I would note for the record that next attached to your application is a petition dated November 9th, signed by Christine McKinley at 22 Lakely Road, Camilla Vander Linden at 44 Lakely Road, Lucille Townsend, 895 Lake Shore Boulevard, and Karen Vogler, 901 Lake Shore Boulevard, indicating that they all approve of continuing the maintenance of the existing fencing. And they own the properties that are affected by the fences, is that correct?
That is correct.
Are you aware of any other opposition from any other neighbors or... All right, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application?
My name's Camilla Vander Linden, and I'm at 44 Lakely Road. And I just want to say that I certainly have no problem with it. The picture that was taken by the town is from my yard, pretty much in front of it. And, you know, we're so woody back there, were some of the older houses, that, you know, so much of it's covered up. And it's not ugly to begin with. And certainly, I think they have requested the variance for the right reasons. So that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Is there anyone else who should speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about fences and deer hopping fences or anything like that? All right, seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter and move on to the next matter on our agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1912-3, upon the matter of request by Richard Clark for area variances to raise the finished deck height on an existing dock exceeding maximum square footage and length on premises 2 Bay Point Circle, Point Pleasant Estates condos in an R5 residential district.
Good evening, my name is Joseph Sidoti. I'm representing Mr. Clark this afternoon. He's currently in Florida and unable to attend. He's looking to raise the height of his dock three feet.
Question, are you an attorney?
Retired.
Well, that's still, so we don't swear you in because you're a member of the bar, so.
All right, thank you.
Even though you're retired, that's probably a better way to be.
Mr. Clark's had a couple of years of underwater dockage, and he'd like to raise it three feet in order he can use his boat that he docks there every summer.
He's not enlarging the deck, he's just...
Nope, not going to change the footprint at all. He's just going to raise it straight up three feet so that he can get the, get in and out of the boat. Mr. Clark is of, you know, advancing age somewhat, and it's harder for him to get in and out of his boat. His wife have a harder time getting in. They need step ladders to try and get in and out of it naturally.
And I'm sure it doesn't help if the dock's underwater.
No, and it's been underwater for two years.
I just wanted to offer the board an explanation for why this is before you tonight. The existing dock was constructed prior to the harbor management law, which was enacted in 1988 on or about. And the harbor management law enacted regulations with respect to the maximum square footage and the maximum length permitted in Arondiquay Bay. Now, since they're looking to enlarge what is considered a pre-existing non-conforming structure, they would need a variance to do so, to maintain that same footprint.
I mean, since they're looking to raise it.
Yeah, they're essentially going to be constructing an elevated deck over the existing deck.
Yeah.
And so, and because it's now larger than a footprint that would be permitted under the current code, they're before this board for a variance to do so. They are not enlarging, they're not proposing to enlarge the dock, deck area. Sorry, that's a lot of, sounds like a nursery rhyme for a moment, but they're not looking to make it bigger than what's there. Just the fact of raising it up in its current footprint, footprint doesn't require relief.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Can we get the spelling of your name, sir? Your last name?
Yes, S-I-D-O-T-I.
Thank you.
Mr. Clark has a petition from a half a dozen of his residents who have no objection to it.
All right, so was that attached to the application?
To me?
Was that attached to the application?
Yes, it is.
All right. Then let me just reference that for the, for the record.
Yeah, they've got the signatures and the, and the statement that they have no objection to raising his boat dock three feet to accommodate the high water levels.
And that's signed by...
By six residents.
Yes, from number one Bayview or Bay Point Circle.
Correct.
Number 12 Bay Point Circle.
Correct.
Number 16 Bay Point Circle.
Yes.
Number seven Bay Point Circle. Number three Bay Point Circle. And number 13.
Correct.
Bay Point Circle. Who would it be, all of the neighbors on each side, correct?
Yes.
Correct? All right.
If we were to grant this, then it's still under DEC for their approval too. There's a application in here, but it's...
The application has pictures of the dock, and it also has a diagram of the proposed raising of the dock, plus all the construction costs.
The town wouldn't issue a building permit until any required DEC permit's been issued?
And my only other question was, there's a hoist on the, on the one side. Is that included at the dock area too, when you're looking at the picture? There's a hoist there off to the, to the left.
Oh, I'm turning the mic back on. Generally, the, the hoist structure, they, he didn't mention the need to, to raise that. The virtue, by virtue of being a hoist, it's sort of the structure itself can be where it is. How high or low the frame that holds the boat in place can go up or down. So we can verify that. I don't think that would be, that wouldn't rise to the level of needing a variance from this board, though.
My only concern is raising it three feet, and they're elderly, and if the water levels were to go down, he's going to be up here trying to get into a boat. Now, it's going to be just the opposite. Has he ever looked into like a floating dock or that he can...
Well, actually, I'm sure that there would be a problem if it did happen that way. But for the past two years, he's been without the use of his boat.
I suspect he'll use...
So there's been a hardship in that regard.
I suspect he'll use the step ladder the other way then.
That's right. Walk down. As I say, he doesn't feel he's changing the footprint anyway. It's just going straight up three feet. Doesn't interfere with any kind of viewing at all from any of his neighbors.
Any other questions or comments? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about docks, water levels, things like that? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this case. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have a happy holiday.
You too.
Next case on the agenda is case number ZB 1912-4, upon the matter of request by Norbit Renovations, acting as agent for Tim Aaron and Claire Hamilton for an area variance to construct a new attached two-car garage with less than required side setback on premises 176 Glen Haven Road in an R1 residential district.
Hi, David Norbit for Norbit Renovations, and I have Tim and Claire here, as well the homeowners.
Could all raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
You do?
Yes.
Okay. Great. So the reason for the area variance is obviously the lot shape is pretty unique in its nature. We look for other places to really put the garage without, you know, getting a variance, and there was really nowhere to put it to really allow them to have cover for a growing family and to house their stuff and, you know, be close to the house itself. So the request, I think, is for, I believe it's for a foot and a half. Nine foot three is required, seven foot two is what the setback is, and that gives them
I know when I was out, you told me that your neighbors had all indicated that they didn't have a problem.
Correct, yeah. Couple of them are here tonight. And then our immediate neighbor that it would probably affect the most, we talked with, they're out of town now in Florida, but we do have like text exchange where she said, "We don't have any concerns, you're good to go." And we actually emailed her these PDFs of all these plans, so they have it in detail.
So is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application?
William Keller, 200 Glen Haven Road. Our house is closest to the road. Then there's 182, and then their home. I have to say, Claire and Tim probably purchased that house at the absolute important time in the life of the house because the original owner lived there for his entire life, and the house was pretty well run down. So if they had not purchased that home when they did, the house probably would have been lost. And almost every house in that area has a two-car garage, so it certainly will conform with the rest of the homes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the application?
Good evening, my name's Greg Gifford. We're at 172 Glen Haven Road, right next door to Tim and Claire and Amelia. And simply put, we have no problem whatsoever with them constructing a two-car garage. I think it would actually add to the property and the community in Arondiquay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about garages replacing carports or anything like that? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter. And I believe that's the last item on our agenda, correct?
That is correct. We have a table.
There was a tabled item, but I don't see anybody here with respect to that. So we can continue that.
Continue to keep it tabled.
Yes, and I believe it was tabled with the applicant's consent.
It was.
Yes, so, all right, we will be in recess until 7:35. All right, we will be in recess until, uh, 7:35. All right, so, um, as I look out, I see that... What? Oh, okay. I see that nobody is here. So, we will, uh, look at the cases in the order that they appear on the agenda.
There are a couple of people in the hallway, so it looks like your last applicant may still be in the room.
All right.
Last one first?
The responsible one is, all right. So we'll take the last first and then, uh, go back to the top. So this is, uh, the application pertaining to 176 Glen Haven Road. This is a type two action for secret purposes. And, um, does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion that we grant the application as written based on the following facts and findings. Um, like the one gentleman said that there's, uh, several two-car garages in the neighborhood. So it would just conform to several properties in the neighborhood. Um, so it wouldn't change the character of the neighborhood. Um, it is a, uh, you know, it is self-created in the fact that, you know, they bought the house and, um, you know, it's, it is, it looks like it's facing a cliff, but the way that they're, I mean, they've looked at other areas and to put the garage in, and, uh, the area that they've chosen is, is the best fit. Um, it says here to put it plainly, there is no other place to build a functioning garage on the property. And, like I said, it's not going to change the character of the neighborhood. It's going to improve the aesthetics of the neighborhood. And, um, that's about it.
I'll second it. Also note that, uh, there's no, going to be no adverse effect on the physical or environmental, uh, conditions if it was granted. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six votes in, in favor. Uh, no opposed, no abstentions. One member of the board is absent. Enjoy your ride.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Have a lovely new year and happy holiday.
All right, so then we'll go back to the top of the agenda. Case number one, uh, or the first one. Uh, this is the application pertaining to 29 Orland Road. This is a type two action for, uh, secret purposes. Uh, does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application? I'll make a motion then that we grant the variance, uh, based upon the following findings. Uh, the possible change to the neighborhood character is little to none, um, given the fact that there are other driveways in the neighborhood that appear to be close to or the same width. Uh, the alternatives that don't require variance would be driving on the grass and parking cars on the lawn, which I don't think is a very attractive alternative in the neighborhood. Uh, the substantiality of the request, it's a foot and a half running the length of the, uh, driveway. It seems to me that's rather insubstantial, given the, um, vehicles that are parked on the driveway. It will not have any adverse, uh, physical or environment, effect on physical or environmental conditions. Uh, I guess it, you could say that it's self-created in that they bought more vehicles than they had room for in the driveway. But, um, I would, uh, not view that as being an obstacle because we've had a number of cases, uh, in the last 14 years that I'm familiar with that, uh, where we've approved additions to driveways to accommodate extra vehicles as everybody now in the household needs a vehicle of their own and maybe a second one to drive in the summer or the winter.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Do you want to just say it in, did they had one, two, three, four, five signatures?
I think we mentioned that during the, uh...
I don't know if you did on the first one.
If I didn't, there's, all the neighbors agreed that, uh, they, um, that they didn't have a problem with it. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. One member of the board continues to be absent. I don't know if this is, uh, appropriate or not, but I'd also like to, uh, put up for the consideration of the board that we, uh, I know we don't have any authority over it, but if the commissioner is able to find some way to leave it the way it is, I'd like to ask him to do what he can, just because I think it looks good the way it is and...
Well, um, the commissioner, I'm, I think will likely review the, um, outcome of this meeting anyway as part of his due diligence.
Yeah, like I said, I know we have no authority. I just thought it looked nice the way, I'm trying to picture it with a 14-foot by one and a half foot.
Yeah, exactly.
Cut out of the, uh, I have a vision of a tire tread going over in the grass that's going to end up in there if any is planted and it's just, turns out to be mud, which could very well be. But anyway, that's up to the commissioner. So the next, uh, item on our agenda is the application for, uh, 32 Lakely Road. This is also a type two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application? All right, seeing none, I'll make a motion that we grant the, uh, variance as requested with the following findings. Of fact, this will not, uh, result in any change to the character of the neighborhood. The fence is largely not visible from the street. Uh, and the only people who are, would be directly affected by it, other than the deer who apparently can't climb over it, would be the neighbors, all of whom indicated that they liked it and were in favor of it. Uh, the alternatives that doesn't require a variance would be to have a shorter fence, which would allow for, uh, deer to continue to jump over it. It's not a substantial request. It will not have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions if granted. And, uh, I don't believe that it would be correct to characterize it as self-created, but if someone wanted to characterize it in that fashion, I don't believe that that would be a factor that should preclude the granting of the variance. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
We're talking just the sections that are in yellow on his drawing?
Yes.
And then in the orange, he's taking that down just for those areas?
I, I guess he is.
Cause I got an orange in here, it's, I just saw it, I didn't see it before.
Yeah, that's a six-foot, uh...
Six-foot high fence, one inch, one-foot lattice. Lattice proposed to be removed.
Right.
Okay.
So he's just going to have it basically being six-foot all around by adding the lattice for a foot. Any, uh, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Uh, motion carries, six votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. One member of the board, uh, continues to be, uh, absent at this point. And then the, uh, last item on our, last case on our agenda is, uh, the application pertaining to Dupec 2 Bay Point Circle. This is a type two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application? All right, I'll make a motion that we grant this, uh, application as, uh, presented. Um, and, uh, as we, was mentioned during the break, this is probably the first of several of these applications that'll end up coming in front of us. This will not create any change in the character of the neighborhood. The dock's been there for a long time. And he's not changing the dimensions of the dock in terms of the, uh, footprint. He's just raising it three feet so he can use it despite the level of the water in the bay, uh, which has been excessively, uh, high for the last, uh, two years at least. Uh, the alternative that would not require a variance would be to leave the dock where it is and, uh, continue to have it be underwater trying to dock and use a boat, which doesn't really seem very feasible. Uh, raising it three feet, I don't view as being a substantial request since it's being raised enough to, uh, take into account the increase in the, uh, level of the water in the bay. It will not have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions if it's granted. In fact, it may improve those, uh, because it'll be more functional, uh, and, uh, won't create a problem. It clearly is not a self-created situation. This is a situation that's created by factors far beyond the applicant's, uh, control. Anyone wish to second the motion?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye? Well, first, is there any discussion? Forgot that, sorry. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. We continue to, one board member who is not with us tonight. And then the, uh, last item on our agenda. Everybody should have received with the packets for, uh, the cases on tonight's agenda. Should have received the draft of the minutes of our meeting of November 4th. Did everyone receive those?
Yes.
And did everyone have a chance to review those? And, uh, does anyone wish to make a motion to approve the minutes as, uh, prepared?
I'm making a motion that we approve the minutes as prepared?
All right, I'll second that. Or Mr., uh, Travis seconds that. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I will be abstaining as I was absent.
And one member absent. So that motion carries, five votes in favor, no opposed, one abstention, one member of the board remains absent. That concludes the items on our agenda for this evening. Uh, I hope everybody has a wonderful holiday and, uh, we may see you back here in January, hopefully. New year.
Will we be getting a new alternate?
I hope that we will be getting a new alternate.
Yes, the plans are underway currently to identify a, an alternate. You have large shoes to fill, Charles Dean.
Those were the greatest three months of my life. Thank you. Thank you.
We hope you enjoyed this presentation of the Aronacote zoning board on ICAT Government Access.